All right, good evening. I would have called to order this special session of the Collins and Board of Education. This meeting has been appropriately advertised with adequate notice. Bethan, roll call please.
Mrs. Brown's absent, Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mrs. Devine.
Here.
Mrs. Maya.
Here.
Mrs. McCulkey.
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Here.
Mrs. Sherman.
Here.
Mrs. Z.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Dilkis.
Here.
And Mr. Chil.
Here, and I think, uh, Ms. Mellon just, uh...
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. There was no executive session tonight, so we're going to move directly into Committee of the Whole. Can I get a motion for Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll first start off with, uh, "Go Birds!" So, yeah. Um, I hope everyone had a wonderful night. So, Committee of the Whole, we're going to use this time to discuss, uh, the main piece of tonight's agenda, which is the resolution requesting, uh, borough partnership and financial assistance. I just want to note quickly, there's one other agenda item, but it's more, very perfunctory, so if those of you who are wondering what that might be, it doesn't have anything to do with the, uh, the request and the resolution.
And I can explain what that is too when it comes to...
Yeah, when we get there. Yep. So, um, to start with, I think we're going to discuss the resolution in Committee of the Whole to give, uh, the board members a little bit more free of a chance to discuss. Um, but to begin with, I did ask Dr. Mandal to go over a little bit of, of the history of this and where we're at, what we've done, and why we are bringing this resolution up for adoption.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Um, we have a few slides, um, that, uh, we have prepared that we will keep up for the duration of this special board meeting. So as, as always, we, we start with our core mission and vision, um, and so that is the foundation of how we begin all conversations, all planning, all discussions, all investments. Uh, and so we use that in order to, to move it forward. And so first, we thought that it was really important to clearly define, um, how the state interprets what is called a thorough and efficient, uh, education, uh, versus how we in Collingswood define a thorough and efficient education. And so statute 18A, which are the laws in which all school districts in New Jersey are governed by, really dictates, uh, much of our actions. Most of the things that the Board of Education, uh, votes on are in statute, um, and it is, uh, there is a, uh, a degree of interpretation that all school boards have the flexibility to exercise, uh, but the overwhelming majority of what they vote on is in state statute. And so we just want to make sure that we are all being grounded in common language and common understanding. And so the way that the state defines, uh, a thorough and efficient education, um, is in essence adequate facilities, uh, they do not elaborate on the term adequate, qualified instructors, curriculum to produce reasonable levels of academic proficiency, programs and supportive services for disadvantaged and special needs students. In Collingswood, we also believe that that is insufficient, and so we believe that a thorough and efficient education also includes modern facilities improvements, access to updated technology, additional qualified staff, including but not limited to academic support, nurses, counselors, elective offerings, et cetera, et cetera, mental health supports, social workers, behavioral specialists, counseling services to students, extracurricular activities, athletics, clubs, music lessons, musicals, plays, field trips, et cetera, et cetera. And so what is our challenge? And so for the last several years, we have been, uh, discussing what is called the triple squeeze. The triple squeeze is what most school districts around the country are currently experiencing. It is, one, higher expectations, um, in terms of what communities are asking school districts to provide to students. Two, the needs of students has dramatically diversified, and so students have more needs in order to meet that higher bar. And three, less revenues are available at the local and at the state level in order to accomplish said expectation. And so in the 22, excuse me, in the 23-24 year, we analyzed our year-over-year comparisons of increased costs versus increased revenue. And so in 23-24 school year, our increased cost to continue doing what we were doing was $3.4 million. Revenue increase was 1.6. In 24-25, this current school year, we saw an increase in total costs by $4 million with an increase of revenue by 1.2 million. And so far, estimated, and we say estimated because we do not yet know what the financial numbers will look like, the state budget will not be released until the end of this month, we do not have projected enrollment numbers, uh, and we are still, uh, focused on tuition rates, and so there are a lot of still unknown quantities. And so we have an estimated increased cost of 3.7 million new expenses with an estimated $1.1 million in actual revenues. And so what this slide shows is that what we have been discussing, um, for the greater part of 11 years since 2014, there is a structural deficit, uh, in our budget. This is not exclusive to Collingswood. Since 2008, there has been a growing budget gap across districts across the state of New Jersey to varying degrees. Last year alone, 250 out of the 665 school districts were negatively impacted with the funding formula and these pervasive gaps that many school districts are unable to close due to an inability to increase revenues to support the inflationary costs year-over-year. Next slide. And so when we think about our core responsibility as a school district, our core responsibility is to provide direct services to students. And so the breakdown of how our current year budget, uh, is established, 64% is focused on instruction, 16% student services, 11% facilities, and 9% are administrative costs. And so how is the district maximizing, uh, the resources that are available to ensure that dollars reach our students? We have an external relationship management team. What this means is, is that we're looking for extra dollars wherever they may be, whether they come in the form of fate, federal or local grants, collaborative partnerships, and philanthropic support, uh, anything to provide additional, uh, resources to students. We are participating in an insurance, uh, insurance joint ventures. We have a, what's called a SHIF, which is a school health insurance fund, as well as the Burlington County Joint Insurance Fund, where, uh, whenever dividends are paid as a result, uh, those go back into, uh, the budget to be applied to, uh, students. We are also participating in the Alliance for Competitive Energy so that our utilities are, uh, in line and the lowest that they can be, so that there is cost savings there, in addition to belonging to the Ed Services Commission, um, and cooperative purchasing for all supplies. We in Collingswood are very fortunate because we benefit directly from, uh, shared services between, uh, Collingswood and Oakland, as well as within our borough, in areas of administration, business services, child study team, custodial and maintenance, technology support and safety. And so moderate income is generated through these shared services. In addition to, uh, cost savings related to transportation by using our, uh, district bus for our vocational technical program and class trips whenever appropriate. We also, uh, benefit using Oakland Public Works for trash removal, and then making sure that we have the services and the support that we need in order to offer the least restrictive environment for students with IEPs, often avoiding, uh, extremely, uh, high, uh, out-of-district tuition costs. And so what is the impact that the Board will be discussing tonight? And so when we look at 2023-2024, based on the, uh, structural gap, uh, it translated into $1.8 million. The way that we closed that gap was we did not rehire staff who retired or resigned, and we eliminated freshman sports and, uh, several other budget line items in order to close the gap. The school district, unlike our federal, uh, partners in Washington DC, we are not permitted by law to carry a deficit. So balance, the budget must balance, um, in March, uh, in order to be approved. In the 24-25 school year, we eliminated $1.3 million in line item cuts, direct, uh, uh, pieces in the budget as requested by schools and departments, operationally speaking, that left a $1.4 million gap, which directly translated into the reduction of 21 educators within our school district. And so far, this current year's budget, the 25-26 estimated budget, we are estimating a $2.6 million gap, which if not filled, will translate into reduction of additional services, programming, and staffing. And these are estimated as of February 10th of 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Mandal, and I want to jump in here also to talk about this slide in relation to the very first slide, or the second slide, which is about thorough and efficient education, right? And one of the things that we've discussed is that there is a state-defined mandated definition for what a thorough and efficient education is, and we in Collingswood believe that there's so much more that constitutes, in addition, a thorough and efficient education. And from what we've, I would say, sitting up here at the board table, uh, have, have heard from the community, uh, it seems to me that the community agrees that there's so many more things that, that constitute a thorough and efficient education other than the, the bare bones basics, right? One of the struggles of this structural budget deficit is that it's forcing us to now ask ourselves, can we provide all of the additional things that we believe make a thorough and efficient education? And also provide what the state mandates we have to provide, right? And one of the struggles that we're trying to, uh, deal with today, and one of the reasons why this research came about is that what we're seeing is that in order to close this gap without additional revenues, we will have to start, uh, taking and, uh, look at these additional pieces that all of us believe help make Collingswood's education truly thorough and efficient. So with that said, the resolution to, uh, introduce the resolution, give me one second here, it's in your board agenda. The, there's a good amount of, of setup in terms of explaining how we got to this resolution, this ask, but the general ask, and then I'll, I kind of want to open it up to the, uh, board members for discussion, is, uh, that the Borough of Collingswood raise $3 million in additional revenue, uh, in this current 25, 2025 budget year, using its available, uh, tax levy cap bank, and provide that to Collingswood Public Schools, uh, so that we can continue to provide a quality education for, uh, for each of our students. There's also another ask, uh, which is that, uh, the Borough of Collingswood commit to providing at least an additional 10% of yearly revenue from existing pilot agreements, uh, to the Collingswood Public Schools budget, and then that the Borough of Collingswood commit to providing at least 50% of yearly revenue from new pilot agreements to help supplement the Collingswood Public School budget. Um, so those are the, the basic asks. Let me kind of open up for, to the board, because I'm sure there's a, a lot of questions or discussions or, or, you know, things to be said.
Um, the $2.6 million that's estimated, where did we come up with that number? I haven't seen that number. I've seen 1.4, 1.8.
It came from my budget preparation as of this morning.
Okay.
The revenues are still, I still don't have state aid. Um, tuition is not looking overly healthy because we do owe both of our sending districts, um, money back. Um, and my assistant and I went line by line through the budget la, uh, yeah, today's Monday, I'm sorry, last week. We cut out things already. Um, so the total of all the budget requests minus some reductions that I've already made versus the revenue, I'm assuming it's going to be flat state aid. Um, the state usually holds us flat. We might, they might give us 20,000 or take away 40,000, but there's never any sizable gain in regards to state aid. Um, so our two biggest pots left, um, is tuition, which is not looking good this year because I said I do owe money back, and that does affect what I can charge next year to our sending districts. Um, and, uh, tax levy.
Okay. It just seems like quite a jump from what we've seen before, so I'm just kind of...
Well, you have to remember, I know you weren't on the board last year, and we, but we just discussed this publicly, a lot of the things that our schools asked for last year during the budget, we had our expiring ESER funds, so, um, 300-plus Chromebooks were purchased with expiring federal funds, that's a, usually a $150,000 to $200,000 draw on the budget. Um, all of our curricular supplies, our Intermath stuff, um, all of that was purchased with expiring federal funds. So all that is back in my budget this year because the federal funds expired and we still need the supplies. But last year to, even though unfortunately we did have to let people go, um, it would have been worse if we didn't have those expiring federal funds. We were encouraged by the county office in Trenton to use that money for one time, you know, for expenses, balance our budget, so we bought as much as we could for the schools with those expiring funds, but that's all back in my budget this year. Okay.
The, the gap that we're facing is about the same as it was last year, and that is with the cuts that we had, so 1.4 and 1.3.
Yeah. And it's just, it's revenue. My revenue's just, it's more or less flat every year, um, with increasing costs, most specifically what's driving me up a wall is just transportation. There's no, doesn't seem to be much, um, what's the word I'm looking for? That the governor's just not listening to the woes of school districts and what we're being charged in transportation. Even though we are a walking district, we transport, um, a lot of our specialized children and some of our childrens that go out of district for specialized services, and those costs are astronomical, and they are going up at a rate that I haven't seen in probably eight, nine years.
Are we assuming the same baseline for the expenses like Chromebooks, sports?
Lean it his way. Towards Roger. Because the speaker's right there.
Are we expecting the same amount of expense for Chromebooks, sports, and other items of the ESER funds covered last year?
Yes, um, there is an increase in math because we're adding a math, math curriculum stuff at the high school, so that is new. Um, Chromebooks, it's actually less of a draw because we had our donation of Chromebooks, which was very gracious, um, so we don't need as many Chromebooks, but we're still probably looking at probably $80,000 worth of Chromebooks because we are a one-to-one computing environment for everyone.
And then for transportation, is that a requirement of thorough and efficient education?
That's a great question. Um, I'm going to say yes. If it's required of the child's IEP that they need this service to get to and from school safely, um, then yes, we are required to provide it. So all the, all the transportation costs are for children that, um, it's come to my office that it's a requirement.
Can you give us, uh, an, uh, about amount of, an estimated amount of money that we spent on transportation per year?
I'm probably going to be coming to the board, if not this month, by March, to transfer more money into my line, but I've spent about $700,000 so far. So I've, I've just about spent my budget line this year on transportation. Um, and it's, it's almost like trying to nail Jell-O to a wall. You know, I look at how much I've spent over the last several years, I try to take an average, I look at the increases, and inevitably I'm paying for more children to go out, and it's, that's a hard one to nail down budgetarily because it changes literally every month. Um, so probably by the end of this month, if not March, it'll probably be, you'll probably see me transferring money into that line. I'm estimating about 1 million, 1.1 million next year in transportation costs, where eight, nine years ago was probably 300 or 400,000, just so you guys can understand.
During the retreat, um, we, we discussed how, uh, transportation can raise their prices whatever they want every, every year, uh, but we're still at a cap of 2% for tax levy. Um, and on, on the next, uh, two from the last bullet, uh, or four from the last bullet, there's the, the difference of the 48.6, or 48 point, 46.8% of the Collingswood property tax versus the state average of 52.4. Can you speak historically about why that's like that and what the spread difference would be if, if we were in line over the past 10 years, like where we would be, be close?
I, I want to say hypothetically, if, if we were in line with our neighbors, we would probably be getting probably 4 to 5 million more. Um, I haven't done that calculation, I just base it on what Trenton says our local fair share is based on. I, and again, I haven't, I'm not a, haven't done the research, but I believe that when Governor Christie limited our tax, what we could tax, we were kind of low, and then where everybody else was higher than us, and we just haven't been able to keep up because we've just, we were, we were capped at a lower tax rate and we just can't, we just can't get any, get any, get any steam on it. Um, and then since then, obviously, property values and everything have kind of gone crazy, and now, um, when you get our state aid printout, I mean, the numbers are just ridiculous as far as, um, what Trenton determines what the town should, like what the taxpayers should be paying, so when they send us our state aid, they consider us fully funded because they're like, hey, you know, um, but we know that's not how it works, but they consider that, that they're, they're done with us, you know? They funded us to the, to the ability that their formulas said they should be, um, but it's not keeping up with what reality is actually showing me.
Right, and there's no appeal process or anything like that we can go back to and say, hey, can we, can we play catch-up a little bit? There's none of that, right?
No, but oddly enough, last year, enough of us screamed, um, that they did give us all a little bit of money back, so, you know, I think when there's the will and the, and the screaming and, you know, they can find it when they want to, obviously. Um, we didn't get, Collingswood didn't really get anything, but I know in Oakland's case that you guys were cut 600,000, you guys got about 270 back, so you got about a third of it back. Um, so he was able to go back and, I guess, realign his budget to give more money to school districts. Um, but I don't, you know, I think this is his last term, and so I don't know what the future of the funding formula looks like, um, which is why I kind of, I went, my, my estimates for revenue, I did flat state aid. And with the federal, I'm looking at an 80% reduction, and I'm, not 80% reduction, 80% of what we're currently spending, which is about a 20% reduction. I'm hoping I'm right. I'm hoping it's not what everybody's saying it's going to be.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify, that difference between the 46.8% and the 52.4% is not the fault of the borough, that is the state mandated.
So, I mean, let me jump in there. I don't know that there's fault to be, to be said anywhere. Um, you know, back in 2008, 2009, right, there was the, the, the local tax cap that was put in place, was it 2009? I think it, it turned to 2%. And so what that essentially means is that, uh, other than certain exceptions or adjustments, you can only raise, uh, your taxes by, by 2% year-over-year, right? So whatever, you know, whatever our tax split percentage was back then, uh, you know, if, if we were below 50% going to schools back then, then, you know, there's not really a way for the school district necessarily to get that over, uh, 50% just by doing the, the, the 2% every single year, right? So I think people like to ask, well, whose fault is it that, uh, there is this percentage rate? I honestly, I don't know that anyone can definitively explain that, nor do I think there probably is anyone, you know, you can't point at, you know, Bob and say, hey, Bob, it's your fault, right? But the, the impact of that now, right, is that we have a structural budget deficit that we need to fill.
I, I also don't think that this would be productive for us if we were trying to place blame. I think we are putting an ask out because of the severity of the situation and the gap. There's been a lot that's happened, you guys with going and advocating at the state level for state relief for this, um, advocating with legislators over the past couple of years, talking and explaining the problem here and what it means for districts like Collingswood, like Oak, Oakland, when these, these cuts happen, um, and this is another way for us to continue to advocate for the needs of our kids by looking at who else can help us fund this educational experience.
That was not my intention to place blame on anyone. I'm just wondering, uh, but when you said that, I'm just trying to understand where, you know, who sets that discrepancy? Is it, you know, are we, are we, were we expecting that money to come through and it just didn't come through, but it sounds like it was more or less like...
When, when Trenton, when they give us state aid, they look at that, right? They look at our local fair share and the town's ability to pay, and then that's how they determine how much state aid we get, because they're assuming we're getting a certain number, but we're not getting that number. Because I can never get that number if I'm only allowed to ask for 2% of the difference. And that's the fundamental problem with the funding formula, and it, I don't blame anybody, I mean, it's not a blame game, but the problem is the 2% and the rising cost. There needs to be some flexibility, which is why, like I said, a, a bunch of us sit on that group, um, with the other superintendents and board members, we're trying to work with Trenton to come up with something that works a little better.
Can I get a better understanding of the spread of our expenses? Are we on par with what we're seeing in our neighboring districts in terms of roughly 80% is student-facing, directly student-facing, facilities at 11, administrative at 9? I'm sitting in a space of, there's not much to shift in those coff, those buckets, but wanting to make sure that we're looking as close to, on par to, our neighboring districts that have had maybe more facilities investment or other investments that we do not have at this point.
Yeah, we're on par. We're lower with regards to administration, but as far as the 80-plus percent that goes directly into the classroom, we're on par with everybody else.
The funding formula, was that developed prior to the 2% cap being put into place?
Oh, yeah, it was, it was developed with the 4% cap, when it was 4%...
Yeah, when it first came out, there was a time you could ask for whatever, and it went to towns, and it got voted down, and it was a whole process. Then it went to 4. Then it went, Christie came in and it went to 2%, and you can move your election to November, and then there's no defeated budget process.
So the, so the funding formula's been out of date for 15 years now, give or take?
Uh, yes.
Bethan, when you say you anticipate flat state aid, that would be assuming that it doesn't come in as less than last year. Flat would just mean the same as last year, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And last year, again, the last three or four years, they've been giving and taking away the same 20 to 40,000, and that's usually school choice aid. It doesn't need, it's not our base state aid, we already participate. Again, that's another way we bring revenue into the district, is we have the school choice program. So we have 30, I want to say 33, um, children that we welcome from neighboring districts, and we get state aid for those children. Um, and that number fluctuates every year with how much the state gives you for state choice aid, so that's usually the difference in my state aid, state aid every year is whatever they do with school choice.
And when it came to the state, um, taking the, the attendance, like the, the student enrollment that you say that usually happens in about October, um, are we where, you have said in the past, sometimes we wind up where, when they take it back in October, it's a lower number than it winds up being by the end of the year? Are we still in that situation now?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, we're, we're, we're lower. And again, we're pretty, you know, we're landlocked, obviously, we're not building a lot, but we have, we have the same, I want to say the, the same issue with the state, um, school choice aid. One year we're up 20 kids, another year we're down 40 kids. It's always a, a large, you know, and I can, I can track it. I know Woodland this year, they're sending us a smaller eighth grade class, but we have a huge 12th grade contingent of Woodland graduating, so that affects, affects our overall, um, on role numbers. So, um, you can almost see large groups of kids coming in, and I can tell, you know, so we're, we're down by about 20 kids, and, um, I anticipate it to be the same way next year.
Um, there's a lot of voices at the table in terms of, like, advocating for state funding and the formula change and whatnot. If the borough is able to, uh, make this happen or any form of this, is that potentially going to affect any state aid that we get? Or if the state aid goes up, are we going to have sort of like a Robbinsville situation where they're going to come back, potentially come back after us and say, no, you need to give us this money back because you got extra funding from X, Y, and Z?
Um, no, I don't believe so. This is one of the ways that we could possibly close our hole. The Robbinsville, you know, the bond referendum, that has yet to be determined whether they get in trouble with state aid. Um, but no, uh, additional tax levy is what Trenton is assuming we're getting, but we're not because I'm limited at the 2%, so I don't believe Trenton would... So I don't believe Trenton would, they consider this a local issue. So I don't think they would, it would affect our state aid.
And just to give a little context there, in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Trenton calculated the district's adequacy budget. So the budget that they say that we would need to provide all of our students with thorough and efficient education has twenty-eight point eight million dollars. And then with that, they said that twenty point four million of that is how much we as a community should be paying into that amount. And then they gave us eight point four million dollars as state aid, right? But in reality, even with Ms. Coleman maxing out her ability to increase taxes that year, we were only able to raise seventeen point eight out of the twenty point four million dollars of local share. So that was a two point six million dollar gap between what we can raise and what Trenton says that we're able to, or that we should be contributing to our education. You know, fast forward to last year, that gap was three point eight million. To this year, that gap is three point seven million. So this year, Trenton is saying our local share with the education, state education formula, fully funded, right? So they're saying we're giving every single district the amount of money that they should need if their local communities are paying in what they should be paying. So they're saying that we should be paying twenty-two point five million, but we're only able to raise taxes this past year to eighteen point eight million. And that's because of the two percent cap that's statute. So we're three point seven million dollars below that, that local fair share calculation or that adequacy budget that Trenton is calculating, saying this is what you need to provide a thorough and efficient education for your kids.
So let's say that, is it okay to move on to the resolution itself? So let's say that we were to vote this in the affirmative tonight. What would be the, the process moving forward to the best of your knowledge, considering that, you know, we haven't heard from the borough yet?
Yeah, so we, we would send this resolution to the borough. I think Vice President, Dr. Seltzer and I would also reach out to see if they would want to meet to discuss the resolution. Really, the thing that I think is important to understand here is that what we are asking is actually fully borough action, right? These, these things that we are asking are fully within the control of the boroughs. So we can't actually vote to do these things. We can vote to ask to do these things. And so, you know, in many ways, the question will be, once, you know, if we were to vote this resolution in the affirmative is whether or not, you know, the borough decides to do that. And, you know, we are two different governing bodies, right? We, the Board of Education governs the schools and the commissioners govern the Borough of Collingswood, right? And so that is under their purview and it would be to see if they would be willing to meet this ask.
And I think what this gives us the, the opportunity to do is rather than, say, board leadership, just going and having this conversation, is we get to do exactly what we're doing right now, which is talk through all of these things transparently in front of the community and then go forward. And, you know, hopefully with a yes resolution, start to have that conversation with the full weight of the board behind it.
So if this, if we pass this, if it goes, if we get the three million dollars from the borough, is that gap of our Collingswood property taxes and state average going to close? Is that the idea?
It, it would, it would close, yeah.
Okay.
And I just, there have been some conversations. Unfortunately, there haven't been conversations where we have sat down, I think, with the borough. Things have been happening either through newspapers or through letters. And there's been a distance that needs to close in order for us to solve this. And I think having real conversations about what the numbers are and the deficit that we're facing. I know that there's been things like this special fund that the borough has pulled together that I think back in October was around forty thousand dollars worth of money that was there. It's available, which while that is great and would be helpful, when we're looking at millions of dollars in a deficit, that's still very hard to think about. So having more open conversations about the gap that we face, where we are and what the need is, and then realistically putting into context, we faced something similar last year and we saw what that impact was on our educators and not wanting to have to do that again if we can't, we can't afford to not make any asks of anyone to, to address this.
Well, what kind of communication has there been? Has there been any communication between the district and the borough, like following our reorg? Like I thought I'd read something about some sort of, like what? Is this the first outreach that we're doing, I guess I'm asking this year?
Yeah, so the, so I've only been board president since January seventh, I think. And so in that time, Commissioner Robinson reached out to me last week, February third, so the night of February third, to ask for a meeting. I think we reached out, I responded on Tuesday. We also, Dr. Seltzer and I also sent a follow-up letter about this resolution on Wednesday. And then we received a response from the borough about the letter, I believe, on Friday. And so that's been the extent of communications between us about working together. And hopefully, you know, with, especially, you know, with us actually putting an ask out there, right? You know, this is part of the process of working together is that we as a board have to decide what we want to ask of the borough so that the borough can then, you know, respond and have something that to actually work with.
The letter from Commissioner Robinson, was that related to this specifically that we're talking about tonight?
Uh, it was to ask for a meeting, yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm really clear that this isn't asked to partner with existing dollars that we've been taxed. We're not saying, suggesting shifting the tax percentage. We're not doing a Robinsonville, sorry, I'm kind of butchering. Robinsonville. We are essentially saying of your coffer, do you have the potential of helping us? So that we are not in the rock and a hard place that we are currently in, projected to be in.
Yeah, so, so let me, let me be very clear here. So what this ask would be, and I do not want to sugarcoat this. This ask is asking that the Borough of Collingswood raise additional revenue, which would raise our tax rates, right? So I'm not going to sugarcoat that at all. This is one of those things where, you know, I remember when, when we met with the commissioners in July about the referendum, one of the discussion points was about Robbinsville, right? And actually, that was a lot of stuff that the community brought to us, Robbinsville. And that's what's been talked about a lot of, the district should go out to referendum to raise additional money for its budget, right? And that's been, I think, talked about a lot, you know, and we've been asked to do that a lot. And one of the pieces there is that we are still waiting on the state to, to, to see what the state does in terms of Robbinsville. Because what happened at Robbinsville was a new interpretation of the law. And we're not quite sure if the State Department of Education will, you know, like you were saying earlier, penalize the district for using the referendum law in a way that they clearly did not intend. Beyond that point, right, the next time we can go out for referendum is in September. We have a very real need right, right now. This is coming up right now. So what this ask is, is essentially Robbinsville, except we don't need to, we don't need to spend ten thousand or whatever dollars for poll workers. We don't need to spend however many thousand dollars on lawyers to draft a, a, a referendum thing. What we're asking for right now is Robbinsville. And it, the, and within the budget of the Collingswood Borough, like they can provide that without us having to go out for referendum at this moment and meet our immediate need.
So we still have the facilities issues that we've been having for a really long time? And potentially, we are going to possibly go out for another referendum? The earliest we can do that is in September, is that what I just heard? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'm okay, I'm okay with, with this and how it's written. I'm just concerned for the community that the borough is going to raise taxes on us for this specific thing. I'm not saying it's not needed, I'm just, it is what it is, that's a fact. And then we are also going to potentially, potentially have to ask another tax raise in September or whenever that may be for the referendum, potential referendum, no?
No, we would, I'm sorry, Roger. We would not be going to the community in September for a referendum. I think that we want to make sure we're not conflating the two issues. One is the operational expenses, which is basically people. And the second is much of a longer-term conversation. And so what I can share is that we fully acknowledge that, and I always like to speak in the affirmative, that our community has, has called upon us to explore every option in order to avoid crippling reductions to services and additional layoffs. And so having said that, we believe that this takes precedent over facilities expansion. That does not mean that there are not other avenues that do not require additional taxation in order to focus on facilities expansion. And so we will be focused on looking at ways to support our facilities that does not include increasing taxes. And so we will not be going to a referendum for facilities in September.
Yeah, so essentially, just as Dr. Miller and I actually talked about this today, and we understand this, this would be a large ask of the community, right? To, in order to provide what we believe is a thorough and efficient education in Collingswood. And understanding that, then what we, you know, we would have to do is be cognizant of the impact of that ask and figure out how do we move about and address our facilities' needs as best as possible, understanding that, that we likely would not be able to go out for another referendum for that in the near future because of the added tax burden it would, it would bring, absolutely.
So I completely agree that we need to work with the borough to increase cost to education. The process has been a little interesting for me because we did have a six-hour retreat and this was not brought up at all. And this was, you know, brought up to most of the board a little unexpectedly. We still have a due diligence to our community. And I'm curious if we have done any work to calculate the average cost to the homeowner of what this might look like. I'm not saying it's not needed, but we do have to pay attention to the burden we're asking a lot of our community to bear.
Yeah, so again, I, I do not want to sugarcoat this. This is asking for increasing in taxes so that we can pay for a thorough and efficient education as we believe, right? So the, the estimated yearly increase would be six hundred seventy-one dollars on the average household, which is, I think, at this point, four hundred forty or four hundred fifty thousand dollars assessed. So that's about fifty-six dollars per month. That would be that, per month. So six hundred seventy-one per year, fifty-six, yeah, fifty-six per month. Yes, 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 sorry if I misspoke there. The, you know, the, you know, I think that, that another board member had asked about, you know, we had a retreat, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, why this was not brought up at the retreat. And, and quite frankly, it's because as, you know, we're in an evolving situation where as we're understanding the looming budget impact that we're going to have with the increase of costs and also what we're anticipating to be flat, hopefully, state funding. And as we've been exploring all these different options for how to bring in additional revenue to pay for, again, this thorough and efficient education that, that we believe it to be in Collingswood, things have been, been moving quickly. The first time that I brought this idea of, of today's meeting was last Monday, understanding that, hey, we need to make sure that, that we're moving quickly because I think the borough introduced their budget on, on Monday with, I think, an aim to pass it in, in March. And so we need to make sure that, that we're getting this ask in front of them as soon as possible so that they have time to adjust their budget if they are so willing to help us out here.
If, so let, we ask for three million, we got three million. We're estimating two point six million in reduction. So if it worked out, we wouldn't have to reduce anything for the next school year. That's what we're looking at right now, right? I mean, in theory, okay. And then that three million would carry over. That's not a one year, that was just ongoing, okay?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I'm going to say that's probably potentially unless the state comes back with significantly less than what we're anticipating.
Right, right.
Correct.
You know, I don't want to add too much to this, but something that, I just want to be clear, something that has weighed on my mind for a while now is also the stability of federal funds. And that, that is definitely a big issue.
I guess I just want to really say out loud, the most predominant lever outside of people is transportation. And the populations we transport are special needs students.
Oh, sorry. No, I, I, I'm sorry, this echoes really annoying everybody. I, you know, and sitting in that board retreat, I, I think that this very much was on the minds of everyone after leaving there because we had a very detailed presentation from Steve Silveci and from Bridget about this discrepancy in our budget and the longevity of it and the history of it. And so I was happy to see action actually being taken. And I believe in terms of transparency, this is the best way to do it so that we can all talk about it openly in front of our town and everyone is on the same page. And I just think it's important, you know, I'm, I'm not thrilled about the idea of someone who is a public educator and is constantly house poor, the idea of, you know, taxes going up. But as a teacher, I can speak to what this actually looks like in the classroom. My district has gotten rid of field trips for last year and the coming year and probably down the line. We no longer have substitutes in my district. And so when teachers are not there, all the students are corralled into whatever large space they can be corralled into and we lose instructional time. We have also law, we have a number of things on the chopping block, including our, including our freshman sports programs. We have a number of coaches who are now being asked to go to volunteer to coach in the district. And we don't fill positions when teachers go on extended leave. We just have a rotation of different teachers covering that teacher's class because we cannot afford to have a permanent teacher in that room anymore. And so as a district that is already struggling to provide, you know, a continued level of quality education and to maximize our instructional time, I, I really think that we need to, you know, state the urgency here. And I'm sure the teachers in this district can feel it, like we're constantly being asked to do more with less and this is going to come to a head. And so I think it's extremely important. I know there's other educators on this board who are feeling it in their classrooms. I would hope that this would really, think about your classroom and what it's going to look like in a year without this kind of funding.
And, go ahead, Chris.
I just want to say, recognizing that the retreat ran a bit longer than we had expected by about an hour and that not everybody could, could stay. After Steve and Bridget's presentation, which if you haven't looked at it yet, I highly encourage it, I, I think the very last thing we talked about walking out of, out of that retreat was building a better relationship with the borough and making an ask of them. And so while we didn't discuss this exact resolution or this exact path forward, I think it was on everybody's mind that we needed to reach out to the borough for as much assistance as they're, they can give.
I just wanted to, to add to Sarah's point that, you know, just a little under a year ago, we had one of the worst board meetings, right? Where we had to talk about and hear kids and parents and, and community members come up and talk about losing their teachers, right? It was gut-wrenching for all of us, for, for the community. And so I think having these conversations about what we have to face if we don't fill this hole is, is, is a reality, right? And I think, you know, considering we're up here because you all elected us, you elected us to turn over every stone, right? And really try to find, do whatever we can to provide our kids with the best education possible. And we see this ask as trying to do just that, right? Turning over a stone that might help us out of something really, really difficult.
So once we approve this, assuming it gets approved, then after that, then we, we wait for the response from, you send this to the borough, we wait for the response and then they come back to us and they say what we're willing or able to do and then we go from there?
Well, so, so I'll make sure to reach out with the resolution and then we'll be in discussions for, I guess, how to proceed. But yes, essentially, one of the big pieces is, because this is in the end a decision by, by the borough, you know, we have to see what the borough is, is willing to, to provide.
Can you just let us know a little bit about the communication plan for all of that? So will there be an ad hoc committee similar to the referendum? I think it's important for, I know we can't have a quorum, but I think it's very important for lots of board members to be in on these discussions with the borough, maybe on a rotating basis or something like that. But I think communication back about what the borough is offering in return and all of us being able to weigh in on what we're willing to accept and, and what, you know, just so that we're informed.
Right, so, so I think that's- Right, so, I think that's one of the things that we'll have to discuss and figure out. Let me also be clear, though. Again, so one of the reasons why I think a resolution is really helpful here is because this situation is different than, say, our regular committees where oftentimes we might have a committee, they do some work, and they bring it to the full board to approve, right? Because in the end, the board has that authority to approve what the community has come up with. I see this resolution as being really important because in the end, what's being asked here, it's, we don't have to, it's not as if we have to accept stuff, right? It's not as if we have to take action there. It's an action by the Borough, right? And so, if the Borough comes out and says, hey, we can provide this much, then they can provide that much, right? And it's not something that we, as a district, would say yes or no to, right? And so, that's something I think we need to be clear about. This is not like something that we'd bring back to the full board to ask for approval, right? And so, that's why I think having this resolution to make sure that we, as a board, are clear and have had a chance to weigh in and take action on this ask, I think is really important.
So, can I just ask a point of clarification around timeline, knowing that we also have to come up with a budget that must be balanced? And so, you know, I think that's part of probably why we're trying to get clarity on timeline. It feels like yesterday is the timeline, and so, it will be a question mark as to what the answer is, and then we'll have to, in parallel, make decisions to get the budget balanced, is what I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes, and I know they have a deadline for their budget, as do we. The week of March 10th is typically when I submit to Trenton. And we would probably meet a few days before that. I forget what our March meeting is. I think we have a couple of them. Sorry, just right out of my head. But what I would probably do, because we can change the budget up until our public hearing, can even change it at the public hearing. I've done that once in my career. I do not recommend. It's very crazy. But between the budget submission to the state in March and our April public hearing, when we present our final budget document to the community, we can change it 18 times. Doesn't matter. Just at that April meeting, what we approve is the actual budget. So, if we don't have an answer when I have to submit the budget to Trenton, I'll probably do, like I did last year, I'll cut massive things, right? Like, I'll cut three or four large line items to make it balanced because the county is very much aware of what's going on with my budget. I've been in communications with the county office through this entire process, and they'll be here tomorrow anyway for Qsec. So, she, just like last year, she knows I'm going to do what I have to do to make it balance and then move the money around to the actual cuts between them making sure that I met my requirement for thorough and efficient, and I have everything in order, and the actual April date. So, there is a little time. I don't know what their deadline is, but we do have a little time into April, okay?
I have a question about, it's like a little elephant in the room situation. I feel the question burning over here. But what, if, you know, if we approve of this, what does this do to resolve the teacher contracts and the situation that that is?
So, yeah, let me speak to that. The, one of the things I think that we need to understand is that this ask is for the operation of this school district, right? And depending on what Trenton might send us on February 27th, I believe it is, depending on how costs might change as we get closer and closer to the budgeting deadline, we don't know exactly what our final number will be, right? And so, I think that's really important to say because trying to tie this to any sort of this or that or anything other than we need this money to do our best to provide as thorough and efficient of education as we can to our kids, I think would be foolish because we'd be making promises that I don't know that we could keep given the number of variables that are in play with the budget. I, you know, I can understand that, not me, that might be an unsatisfactory answer to some. It's an unsatisfactory answer to myself as well, but it is the truth.
I mean, I think it's a valid answer, but I mean, I think there's maybe a bargaining chip to be able to try to use that to the best of our ability because, you know, there's, you know, there's tension in the air. And then, I'm sure the Borough sees that as well. It's not just blind to them. So, what would help resolve that on our end would probably help resolve some problems on their end as well. So, I wouldn't say eliminate it completely from the table, but, you know...
And I will say, in that 2.6 million, in that number, we have three units that are up in June. So, in that number is estimated increases for all three units, just so, like, it's not just like I just made up, no, like, all three units, you know, again, it's like throwing jello to the wall, but I do have salaries estimated for next year, and that's what's kind of in that number also, just so you know.
Can you clarify what you mean by units, just real quick?
Bargaining units. So, we have the CEA, the PSA, and our buildings and grounds, that we have three units in Collingswood that we negotiate with, okay?
Any other questions or comments from board members?
No, I just, no questions. I just appreciate that we're going about it in this way as compared to, like you said, the expense of the attorneys and the polling numbers and all the referendum pieces and the potential for Robbinsville scenario, similar to that to come back on us. I think that this is definitely a better way to go about it. You know, we'll see what they say. And I think, back on Megan's point, I think what she was asking, if I can clarify, was that if there are conversations with the Borough, that we all rotate and are involved in those discussions, not so much that we're going to come back to vote as a whole, but just to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be engaged.
Seeing as there are no other questions or comments from board members, I'll take a motion to close committee of the whole.
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to section four, public comment. One second here. So, the purpose of this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is minded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We'll be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made by the board president after a public comment or at the end of public comments. For more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expect to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in tents. In all fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comments, and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Jim Maile, 400 Virginia Avenue, Collingswood. I also serve as the mayor. And I want to, I want to address a few things. First and foremost, we're, the Borough is more than happy to enter into a partnership to try to figure out your budget. We're more than happy to do that. We first got word of this in a letter Wednesday. Since then, as I said in the letter that I sent out to everyone on Friday, since then, we've been in touch with legislative leaders, talked with our auditors, pulled an auditor that does schoolwork from them, assembled a couple other school, experienced school folks that can help in this. We were more than happy to. We're going to need to really work on this because the main ask that you're doing here, you're not, I know you keep referring that the Borough just has to take action. It's everybody here. It's not the Borough. It's not like we act on this. And just to give you an idea of the magnitude of what this ask is, we just introduced our budget on Monday, as you made reference to. We have increased that to the max of our cap, our appropriation cap, and that added an additional $220,000 onto our budget for an average increase of $70, okay? This, what you're requesting, which we, under the law, we do have the ability to do, would increase taxes, as the president said, roughly $670 a year on the average property, which is now $450,000, okay? It would be a 20, almost a 25% increase in the municipal tax rate, okay? I've been doing it a long time. Never, ever have we done a tax increase close to that. We have, and if we were ever going to do that, we would be going deep into a process with the public in order to go through and explain what has to be done, why it has to be done, why we have this all of a sudden massive increase. So, I would say to you, we're happy to get people working on it. We're ready to go. We would want to very, very seriously engage the public. I've got a couple other things. One thing is, and especially hearing that this wouldn't necessarily resolve the teachers' dispute. I, we believe that there needs to be, and I know from the law, the district and the union would need to waive kind of unfair labor practice charges against one another. We believe through all of this, the teachers' union needs to be a part of all of those discussions because we should not go through this exercise and not have a teacher's contract resolved. That's just wasting everybody's time. So, so, those two things, and you answered my question about referendum. There's no discussions going on about referendums because if there were, we just wanted to make sure that was part of all this discussion, too. Just that all of it was in. So, that's really, we're ready to go, no problem. You can, as I said in my letter Friday, you do whatever process you want to do, but anybody can call me anytime. I think most of you have my cell number. I know the superintendent does, and you could, you don't have to wait to do this formally this way. You could call, we could go over it, we could have talked about this whenever you wanted to. But since Wednesday, we've begun taking action. I'll talk with some legislative folks tomorrow morning. Happy to get the work on it, and that's it. Thanks. Hope I kept to my three minutes.
I'd like to really quickly thank the mayor for speaking here. In terms of the communications piece, I think I would assume that the board here, we would all be absolutely willing, as a district, to help with the communication piece about this. I appreciate the mayor's mention of appropriations cap. That does not apply here. We're talking about the tax levy cap and that there is, again, $3.6 million available in tax levy cap bank that can be used to fund the schools. In terms of the teacher's contract, as I said last board meeting, the board has been eager and willing to settle a contract. In fact, in that, this graph over here, as Ms. Coleman mentioned earlier, there are in there budgeted yearly salary increases for all of our teachers and staff in there. We have offered raises at this point above county average to all of, to our CEA, to the, to our teachers. And again, we are eager and willing to settle a contract. At this moment, the next point for that work is April 3rd, when we will be meeting with fat miners. The piece here I kind of want to point to is, again, we are asking for average, as a district, right? Right now, we receive 48.4% of our local tax share goes to schools. The state average is 52.4. We're basically asking for average so that we can try to provide more than average. And so, with that, I'm going to turn the floor back over to the committee.
Rebecca Finkel, 916 Park Ave. I'll try to be quick. I know we were all up late last night. I wanted to thank you all for holding this meeting and having the community present. I think it's really important. I also wanted to thank you for showing up and testifying before the New Jersey Department of Education last month. As covered really thoroughly in the retrospect, school board representatives from here and our neighboring districts like Haddon Heights and Haddon Township drove through a snowstorm to testify to the damage the state's outdated funding formula is causing schools around New Jersey. I also want to take the time to thank the parents who showed up at that meeting, as well as everyone participating in the New Jersey Fair Funding Collective Advocacy Group. I also want to thank and give a big shout out to Collingswood residents Bridgette Bracione and Steve Silvezi, who presented this information to you at your retreat and created the Bridge the Gap website. Please, everyone, look up these sites, join their mailing list to see how we can all get involved. It's really inspiring work. Showing up is hard. Digging through data and policy documents is hard. Standing up is hard. And sometimes in a small town like this, it can be politically inconvenient, but this level of effort and courage is exactly what we need to get teachers paid and to give our students the education they deserve. So, thank you, guys.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. Yeah, I largely wanted to also echo the efforts of the New Jersey Fair Funding Collective, which I've been a part of. I know Beth Ann and I know a few other folks here have been involved. I think that this effort is particularly important right now that we shore up our funds because I think everyone should also be deeply concerned about MAGA attacks on public education in the coming months and years, that these numbers are possibly going to get worse and the quality of public education in this country could suffer as a result. So, I think in part, as much as the mayor may have emphasized the large amount that this would involve, that we, if we're dedicated to public education as a community, I think we need to take a step like this in order to make sure that we have the quality of public education and that we pay our teachers fairly. Because I think, you know, I, we've had, I've seen many discussions, I've contributed to many discussions, and this, these numbers, you know, keep more than just the board up at night, thinking about how impossible some of these problems are. So, making this work is really important, and it's a thing that needs the whole town to unify over. So, thank you.
Hi, Rebecca Sieg, 1030 Grant Ave. First, very much appreciate the transparency of this presentation and the time to come together. My ask is fairly simple. We talk about a $670 average increase for taxpayers after a very long six months of hearing from taxpayers with the referendum that they didn't know how they could afford it. And given the reassessment that just happened, where our family went up over $2,000, that we're trying to figure out what this means come this summer, I really would urge you, as you think about communications, while you're asking the Borough to take this on, listen and learn from your families who are out there and what they're experiencing to make sure that they can really withstand an additional $670 every year plus the 2% cap, or the 2% levy that you'll be adding to your district or your district taxes as well. Because I do very much worry that we are pricing people out, and we don't want that to happen. We want to continue serving the community that we are a part of. So, please make sure that that community engagement includes really listening to people who've been affected by tax increases already and what they're going to be experiencing come this summer and fall. Thank you.
Hey, Megan Dusmet, 220 Woodlawn Terrace. First of all, I just want to thank you all for having these difficult conversations and being willing to really wrestle with these very hard questions and problems that we're dealing with in the community and doing that in the open and giving us all a chance to participate in it. I think for anybody who has been paying attention... Um, I think for anybody who has been paying attention in Collingswood over the last several years, I know my son is in second grade, so I sort of tuned in more to schools when he was starting to be at that age, right? But it's been very clear to anyone who's paying attention for the last several years and probably before then I just wasn't paying attention, our schools are underfunded. And that's at the local level, at the state level, at the national level. There's all sorts of reasons for why that is, um, and I'm not going to get into them because I don't have time. But I think one of the things I always say to my son George is mind your business. Like, you, this is your business, everybody else has their business, right? Your job, the reason you all are here on the school board, is because you are tasked with a very important responsibility of figuring out how do we provide education and provide the best education we can to the students in our community. And we're all here because we think that's really valuable and important, and I want to thank you again for the work that you do. And I think your job is to say, this is the money we need, and we're asking the state, but that is a long, arduous process, and we have little influence over that. God only knows what's going to happen at the federal level, but at the local level, you have the ability to ask the borough. It's the borough's job to figure out how to bridge the gap. They've been underfunding our schools and they need to figure out how to fix that. And it's all of our jobs as a community, right, to go to the borough. And I've got plenty of suggestions for that meeting, but I'm really glad that you all are having this conversation, and I want to thank you for making the tough ask because if we don't have more money, we can't pay our teachers what they deserve. We're going to have to lay off more teachers. Our kids are just going to continue to not get the services they need, and that's what we have to do. And it's hard, but that's, we're all grownups, we know that. So, thank you.
Steve Silvezi, four thirty-nine Haddon Avenue. Uh, I'm here to discuss the critical issues of the funding gap affecting our Collingswood schools. As highlighted by the state funding formula, our district is currently underfunded by several million dollars at the local level. This gap is the result of nearly fifteen years of a poorly designed state funding formula, including an unrealistic local fair share expectation and strict limitations in school tax raises. This shortfall significantly impacts our ability to provide fair pay, expand on student programming, and plan for the future. The NJ DOE does have to fix the state funding formula, but that will take considerable time, and we have to fill this financial gap now. At this point, with all the various laws and policies in place at the state and local level, filling this financial gap requires a collaborative effort with the Borough of Collingswood. By working together, we can explore solutions such as advocating for increased state funding, uh, adjusting local tax levies, and identifying alternative revenue sources to ensure our schools receive the support they need. I urge the board and borough leadership to prioritize this issue and work collaboratively to bridge the funding gap. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Tanyer. I've been teaching here for twenty years, and I just want to thank you all for being here. And right now, you, as a board, are dealing with issues that you did not create. Decisions were made long before any of you had this position, and now you have a golden opportunity to get help to equalize the situation. But what you need to realize is that the CEA is in the exact same situation. We are in the lowest third in terms of pay in this county, not because of anything we've done recently, but because of an accumulation of decisions that have happened over the years that have always been for the best intention. But just as you are now asking the borough to help you equalize an unfair and unjust situation, we are asking you to help us retain teachers by correcting an unjust and an unfair situation. We tend not retain math teachers. So many of our students, and I'm not a math teacher, okay? So many of our students are in classes that are run by subs or that have, have had multiple teachers throughout the year because every other local district is offering those math teachers more. Teachers, math teachers have been here for twenty years, left the district because they were getting more elsewhere. And just as you hopefully can sit down with the mayor and get some help to equalize the situation, we're asking that you sit down with our negotiating team and try to bring an equality to a situation that is hurting everybody. Thank you so much.
That's my kid's English teacher. I'm really excited. This is like, it's really great. And I'll just tell you that I have a daughter who is following her passion for writing right now. So, thank you for that. Uh, Rob Lewandowski, uh, ten twenty Park Avenue. Uh, I want to thank the, the, the board for, and, and the superintendent and the board secretary for outlining really the dire problem here. We all, we all see that it's a problem. And, you know, clearly, given the budget timeline, we need to move urgently. Um, but we also need to move collaboratively, and we're happy to do that. We have to move cautiously because this is really risky stuff. We can talk about that the, the borough can just, just, you know, just, we'll raise the six hundred and something dollars. Um, but that also affects bond ratings, which then changes essentially, you know, our ability to borrow money, raises costs more. So, now that, now the burden on people are even more. So, these are, these are, these are not things to say no, but they're things to say, it's not easy. And that also means we also have to think cre- creatively. And, and I, I don't want to minimize that because when the resources are tough, then we need to be resourceful. And we need to find ways to, to, to sort of make this work. Because every little bit that, of extra revenue that we can gain, every little bit that we can save, every creative partnership, anything else we can do, we hear transportation, all these things, we have to do it because we owe it to, to our community, right? We all owe it. We're all public servants. We all owe it to our community. I mention all this because, um, my sleeves are already rolled up. I'm in. I'm looking forward to working with you to, to do this. And, um, you know, let's come to a, a, a solution that's going to work for our students and, and all our community. So, I thank you for the chats.
Gretchen Colletti, nine twenty Grant Avenue. Uh, I just want to echo what, uh, the mayor and Mrs. Tanyer stated is that you, you have to have the teachers involved in this and you have to have their contract in mind. Uh, again, we could, we could find all the money in the world and we could make beautiful, uh, you know, uh, state-of-the-art facilities, but if we don't have the love and the support of our teachers who do so much every day, and, you know, we need to have steady teaching. We don't, you know, I, I know it's a systemic issue currently in education of the lack of substitutes and everything else, but it is essential for our children to have that stability. So, I just really want to make sure that you're taking the people who are with our children more than we are per hours every day into consideration and making sure that their contracts are met with this. Let's get it funded.
My name is Jack McMullin, Belmont Avenue, uh, thirty-five-year resident of Collingswood, twenty-nine-year employee of the Collingswood School District, eighteen-year principal of Collingswood Middle School, and the president of the Collingswood Principals and Supervisors Association. The Collingswood Principals and Supervisors Association supports the Board of Education's request to partner with the Borough of Collingswood in order to strengthen our school district. Over the years and in countless ways, we've been witness to the borough's commitment to improve the quality of life for its residents, and we've seen their ongoing efforts to enhance and support community growth and development. Whether it was the revitalization and reimagining of Haddon Avenue in the early nineties, the conversion of ablated property to provide affordable senior housing, or the ongoing improvements to our town's infrastructure and services, our elected borough officials have always demonstrated a deep level of commitment to our town and our citizens of every age. We believe that a strong partnership between the school district and the Borough of Collingswood will create a unified approach to addressing the challenges we face and ensure that our students are well-prepared for the future. Together, we can provide a robust learning environment that fosters excellence, prepares our students for a prosperous tomorrow. We look forward to working together to continue building a thriving educational community for our students, families, and educators. Thank you.
Don't start the timer yet. I have to get my glasses on. Okay. Uh, Robin Hogan, president of the Collingswood Education Association and fifth-grade teacher at Sharp. So, I'm here tonight also to speak in regard to the proposed partnership between Collingswood Board of Education and the Borough of Collingswood. Um, the CEA supports this partnership and feels confident that it'll have a positive impact on the students and the community. Over the years, the borough has successfully engaged in numerous community involvement plans that have made Collingswood the kind of place that families and individuals want to work, live, and raise their families in. We believe that this partnership, which should bring all parties to the table to work together, will strengthen the entire community. It's our hope that this partnership will be based on transparency and mutual respect, guided by the singular goal of improving the Collingswood School District. This type of partnership is an endeavor that the CEA can support, and we look forward to the changes and opportunities that this partnership will hopefully bring about. Um, I do want to make one comment. I'd rather not negotiate publicly. Secondly, I appreciate your statement that you are eager to, um, resolve our conflict with the contract. However, you have publicly stated that you would rather go to fund, to fact-finding, and you'd rather spend that money on attorney fees than put it into negotiations. So, um, I just wanted to make that statement. Um, I do, I too would like to resolve this, but we, we are very concerned about retaining and attracting new teachers. Thank you.
Seeing as there are no more public comments, uh, I would like to address a few points. First off, I, I would like to, uh, thank the presence of the CP, uh, PSA and, and also CEA for, for their support here. I think it is important that we all come together to, uh, advocate for the strongest possible school district that we can. Let me also comment to, uh, to a point about the, the tax increases and the impact on the community. Again, as I said earlier, I, I do not want to sugarcoat that what this is asking for is an increase in taxes. The resolution was not written lightly. The impact of these taxes was not brushed aside and not considered. What we are looking at here is the very real impact of, the very real impact of a, a, the budget hole that we are looking at, two point six million dollars at, right now, at this moment, that we're estimating, where last year, a two point eight million dollar budget hole led to one point four million dollars in, in cuts in staffing. That was twenty-one teachers, staff, and administrators. So, that is one of the things where we understand that tax increases have an impact on the community. We also understand that having schools that cannot support the clearly amazing teachers that we have has an impact on the community. If there's an alternative that doesn't raise taxes on our community, that can provide this funding, that can support our teachers and our students, please let us know. Dr. Nadal, at the beginning of today's meeting, has gone through a number and a list of ways in which this district has sought to save money, to bring in outside resources through grant funding. Our budgets are audited yearly by third-party external auditors. We have one of the best business administrators in the state of New Jersey who teaches other business administrators how to do this job. So, if there is another way that we can close this gap without raising taxes, without asking our community to invest in its schools, then please let us know, and we will explore. With that, I'd like to move on to section number five, which is the resolution. Uh, I think I have to read the resolution in full, correct, and then ask for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, resolution, request for borough partnership and financial assistance. Whereas, a strong, well-funded public school system strengthens the entire community. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools educates the community's youth in approximately two thousand three hundred students. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools and schools across New Jersey have faced continually rising costs of supplies, services, and programming. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools has received essentially the same amount of school funding from the state since the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools is subject to NJSA eighteen A colon, uh, seven F dash thirty-eight, which limits its ability to raise revenue from increases in its property tax levy to additional two percent per year, with limited exceptions and adjustments. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools has raised additional revenue up to statutory maximum every year since the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools is required by NJAC six A colon twenty-three A dash sixteen point two D three to maintain a balanced budget. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools has limited its school supplies budgets, delayed facility maintenance, sustained one of the lowest administrative costs per people in the state, and brought in grant funding to offset continually rising costs. And whereas, despite these cost-saving and revenue-generating efforts, which included one point three million dollars in cuts to budget lines for the twenty twenty, uh, four, twenty-five school year, Kinsley Public Schools had to lay off twenty-one valued teachers, staff, and administrators in May twenty twenty-four to close an additional one point four million dollar deficit due to rising costs to maintain a balanced budget. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools projects at minimum a one point eight million dollar increase in costs for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools anticipates the need to cut additional services, programs, and staff to maintain a balanced budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year if additional school funding is not secured. And whereas, Kinsley Public Schools received forty-six point eight percent of Kinsley property taxes in twenty twenty-three compared to the state average of fifty-two point four percent. And whereas, the Borough of Kinsley has the statutory ability to raise an additional three point six million dollars in revenues in its twenty twenty-five budget through use of its bank levy cap pursuant to NJSA forty A, uh, colon four dash forty-five dot forty-five. And whereas, the Borough of Kinsley anticipates raising four point six million revenue in its twenty twenty-five budget from payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements. And whereas, the Borough of Kinsley has a statutory ability per NJSA forty colon forty-eight dash seventeen point one to appropriate additional revenues to supplement the Kinsley Public School budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kinsley Board of Education requests partnership with and financial assistance from the Borough of Kinsley that will enable Kinsley Public Schools to provide quality education to each of its students and continue to serve and strengthen the community of Kinsley. And be it further resolved that the Kinsley Board of Education asks the Borough of Kinsley to raise three million in additional revenue in the twenty twenty-five budget year and every budget year moving forward to provide additional revenue to the Kinsley Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the Kinsley Board of Education urges the Borough of Kinsley to allocate in the twenty twenty-five budget year and every budget year moving forward at least an additional ten percent of yearly revenue from existing pilot agreements to supplement Kinsley Public Schools budgets. And be it further resolved that the Kinsley Board of Education urges the Borough of Kinsley to commit to providing at least fifty percent of yearly revenue from new pilot agreements to supplement Kinsley Public Schools budgets. And be it further resolved that this resolution be delivered to James Mailey, mayor of Kinsley, and Robert Lewandowski and Morgan Robinson, commissioners. So, I would take a, uh, motion to, uh, adopt, uh, this resolution. And a second?
Second.
Questions and comments from board members? Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dulcous?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to section six miscellaneous. There is only one item in this section. It's 6.01. It's a NJQ SAC DPR submission.
I can explain that.
Yes, please.
Q SAC, we have to go through it every three years with the county where they commit and they basically look at everything. We submitted this, I think, in August or September, and I must have been too early because the state revised their forms in October. So two weeks ago, they emailed, again, they're coming tomorrow, they looked at it like last week, but anyway. They, they're like, oh, you used the wrong forms. And so apparently, the forms I downloaded, they uploaded in October. So we're just reapproving the DPR on a new form.
So sometimes the early bird does not get the worm, I guess.
No, apparently, apparently not.
Moving to approve item 6.01, do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Any questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Devine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mrs. Z?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dilkis?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes. Moving on to the final section for public participation. I don't believe I have to go through the entire public comment statement, but this is a section for more general comments that doesn't have to be necessarily about items listed on the agenda. Just a reminder, in fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment, and Ms. Coleman will assist by keeping time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Gretchen Collecki, 920 Grant Avenue. You had mentioned earlier about the donated Chromebooks, and we had heard earlier, I don't know, I guess it was maybe August, September, that they were being donated. Have those, and at that time, you said that there would be Chromebooks that would then be able to go home with students who didn't have them. Has that been offered? Because I know at some point, it was only for free and reduced lunch children, but in the beginning, when we first found out that they were being donated, it said anyone or the high schoolers were going to get them to come home.
We're working on that, the tech team and I think Mr. Whalen's helping out with that. Just so you have, we had to, they came and some of them were not in very good shape, so they needed to be looked at, and then we needed to put our protection program on it, you know, with like all of our whatever, cyber, blah, blah, blah. Right, so that is ongoing, but yeah, we're looking to send something out that is getting worked on. They came like in batches, like they didn't come for a long time, and then we got like a bunch, and then we didn't get some, so. I think they're all over Mr. Whalen's office at this point in time, but yeah, we're working to send something out. It's getting worked on.
Thank you.
Sorry, just that question I could answer, so I did.
Hi, Nancy Ready, 254 East Night Avenue. I just, I have a question about this board's priorities, and I know that there's a lot of new board members or handfuls since the fall, but I mean, the budget situation that you all are describing up here feels to me like a five-alarm fire. Like, my children have gone to Garfield, we lost wonderful teachers there, and I know that was the case throughout the district. And I'm wondering why we're dealing with this now and why we didn't deal with this like in the fall? Because I think this is a good idea to ask for more money from any place we can get it. And instead, we spent the fall fighting about the referendum, which would have raised everyone's taxes in a way that I think would have made the ask now that much harder. And I just don't understand that choice to work on the referendum that would have addressed facilities when we have this enormous gap in the budget around people that we really need to address. I don't know if that's, that's not an answerable question necessarily, but it's troubling to me about the way that the board is prioritizing requests of the community.
Hi, Morgan Robinson, 117 East Wayne Terrace, and I do serve as Commissioner. My, I'd like to state for the record, my communication from last week was regarding unifying on behalf of our vulnerable populations, our LGBTQIA students and our immigrant population, to provide resources and security, because this is a very scary time. And regarding the budget, it is of utmost importance to just keep community engagement as much as possible because the tax raises are going to hurt a lot. I'm not saying they're not necessary, but we're willing and looking forward to working together to come to a solution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Haynes, 248 East Night Ave. In what you said about the Chromebooks and that some of them weren't in the best condition and we needed help, or the tech team. I'm sure they are so overburdened, and I know, I also serve on the middle school PTA board. We have brought this up with Dr. Jack in the past. I know all of us are more than happy to help the tech team with those or recruit parents to volunteer to help get the Chromebooks in the hands of kids too. So I want to offer that again. I'm not the most tech savvy person, but I can learn and we can find other parents I know who would be willing to help also do that for Dr. Whalen and the tech team if needed. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I'd like to jump in really quickly here and just thank Commissioner Robinson for her clarity on that email, and I believe that the board probably is all in support of coordinating and working with the Borough to support our immigrant and LGBTQ plus community members. I'm really appreciative of Dr. McDowell and the district for releasing a public statement in support of immigrant students on January 24th and also a public statement. Thank you. In support of LGBTQ plus students on January 30th. And I'm hopeful that the Borough will also publicly support those communities and that we can work together to support those communities as an entire town.
Kevin Barola, 705 Center Street. Wondering, are we looking into a referendum again? Or at least looking to reorganize the schools, what buildings we have to help reduce the overhead costs and then be able to reallocate those funds towards the students and everything else? Just wondering if that's being looked into?
So just to reiterate that question, it was about whether or not the board is looking to look at a referendum to reorganize our schools, to reduce the overhead cost and put that money back into the, I guess, the staff, you know, pot, basically. And so one of the pieces here is that we have an immediate need right now to help close that budget hole. And I think as a previous community member stated, yes, this is a five-alarm fire. And I, I'm sorry, if I'm not properly conveying that this is a five-alarm fire, that has to be closed. And that last year with a $1.4 million hole that had to be closed, that was 21 staff members. So if I'm not properly conveying that, I would like to convey that. So understanding that this will lead to a tax burden upon our community, right? We have to be very thoughtful about when in the future we are able to go out again to the community to ask for additional funding to work on our facilities. But in the meantime, I know, having talked to Dr. McDowell and Ms. Coleman, there is work that's being done to figure out ways in which to address facilities needs as best as possible in a tax-neutral solution. So we're exploring all options in the meantime.
Good evening, all. Cato Lachlan, 702 Collings Avenue. It strikes me that all of these issues are chronic and not acute. The tax cap was passed in 2008. That was many years ago. We bought our house in town 15 years ago. We paid over $100,000 in property taxes already, and we own a very modest home on the West Side. It's nowhere near $400,000 in value, despite what the Borough now says it is. There's tremendously problematic issues in our society, and a lot of them have come because we've been kicking the can down the road for generations. We were having these exact same conversations when I was in elementary school in Merchantville, two towns that way. We were having them in the 90s when I was in high school in Pensacola, three towns that way. These are not new issues. We need to find a solution. I'm happy to pay more taxes, but I also don't have a lot of money to pay new taxes with. I haven't gotten a raise in several years. Thank you for your time.
Hey, everybody. Mike Pallucci, Vice President for the High School, for the CEA, and a resident in town here. And I do want to thank you guys for coming to the table and also thank the Borough for being willing to come to the table as well. You know, far be it for me to get up here and say that, you know, this is not a five-alarm fire. As Roger said, it is, and we need this funding and it's really essential. I do think we need to have, I think we need to project our, or telegraph our intentions fully, though, because, you know, as it came, as we talked about earlier, these, these needs that this hole, or filling this hole will meet are separate from facilities issues. You know, we're still renting Good Shepherd, and if we're hanging on to that building, and that's another discussion, whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, or whether we need it or not. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that we're holding on to that with the intent to go to referendum again, to purchase it, right? Like, or to renovate it. So I just think we need to put everything on the table that is coming down the pike. You know, whether it's facilities, staff. I don't know if a lot of people know this, I know you guys know this. I don't know if the public knows this, but a lot of our federal grants, the things that, kinds of things that are on the chopping block right now are going also to salary. So it's very possible, given the extreme circumstances at the federal level, that we could fill this hole and then take massive personnel cuts if, you know, Elon Musk or one of these idiots like flips a switch and like we're losing, you know, it cuts the spigot off and like that's, that's staff members right there. Like, our wellness center right now is being funded by federal grants. We've lost, you know, the director of the wellness center and one of the counselors. They were doing an incredible service for our students, you know? And that's, that's not something that even that the district could control. You know, that money is only through 2026. And, you know, they're professionals, they have to think about their stability and their, you know, their finances, and they had to go where there's a more stable job with, you know, a more clear funding source for its future. So I just want to request that we put everything on the table and that people are clear about what we are paying for, what we're thinking about doing with it, and how other things other than this can kind of factor into this thing too. And I'm willing to work together and work with everybody, so thanks again.
I want to just spend a moment to thank Mr. Pallucci. I think what you have said is exactly one of the worries that we've had on the board, which is federal grants. That stability there. You know, it's something that we, everyone assumed was stable, that we could rely on, if nothing else, right? Who knows? And I think I heard it, Dr. McDowell, I think, said it so well the other day when I was talking to him, which was, in times like these, we have to rely on each other, on our own community, right? And that is part of the thing here is, as best as we can, we have to invest in our schools so that this lack of stability externally can be mitigated as best as possible. And then in terms of clarity of the needs of this district, this is absolutely a five-alarm fire, and our facility needs still remain. And the feedback we got from the community when they voted in the fall was that, at this point in time, with that, the plan that was put forth, that was not acceptable, and we have to go back to drawing board. And so we will do the best that we can with the facilities that we have now, but the needs of our facilities do not change, and we are still going to be looking for ways, as I said earlier, to address as many of those concerns as possible in a revenue-neutral, tax-neutral way until the community could support more funding there.
Hi, Dan Smith, 225 Lincoln Avenue. I just wanted to say I'm really encouraged by the developments today. The board's being really proactive about our biggest challenges. You know, I'm not worried about what happened in the past. It's better late than never. I mean, we'll really talk about the right things. I'm also really hopeful that, you know, between a board that clearly has the energy to make a difference and a board of commissioners that really runs a smoothly operating town with a fantastic staff, that if you put those two together, if we work together, that we're going to get to where we need to be. So I don't have a lot to say, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Hi, Lindsay Oster, 1005 McGill Avenue. I have a few different things that I wanted to talk about. First, the internet outages, which I know that you guys have addressed in the past. I've been told by my middle schooler that they are still very, very present. Today alone, they had two different outages that prevented the teachers from projecting whatever, you know, the class was supposed to see. If this is happening twice in one day, and I know this has been going on for a long time, that this is a real, real big issue, both to the teachers' abilities to teach and the students' abilities to learn. Second is the bathrooms. I've been, I've heard from high school students and parents of high school students that the bathrooms are a major issue at the high school, that only one bathroom remains open at a time, and students are looking through the halls and wandering through the halls trying to find whatever that open bathroom that day happens to be. This is a huge, huge issue. Anyone who, you know, knows how much you have to go to the bathroom when it's time to do that, you know? These students are wandering through the halls trying to find an open bathroom, and only one for, I'm not sure exactly how many students in the high school. But from what I've been told, you know, people are getting in trouble from their teachers because they're out of the classroom too long in their time to go to the bathroom, and this is due to the fact that they can't actually find an open bathroom. In addition, at the middle school, the boys' bathroom has been out of, at least one of the boys' bathrooms has been out of commission for over two months. So again, bathrooms, I'm not, I'm not sure if this is of facilities that the bathrooms are out of order, and I'm not sure why they aren't being fixed, or if it's, you know, other issues. I've heard of potential, like, people vaping in them and therefore their clothes because of lack, you know, you don't want... Whatever it is, the bathroom situation needs to be fixed. And third and final is with regards to Good Shepherd. We were talking about the money deficits, and yet we're spending approximately $84,000 a year for the rent of Good Shepherd for office space, which is public money that's flowing into religious organizations, specifically, I believe it's the Diocese of Camden. So if we're looking for funds, that would be a great place to start. Thank you.
So Lindsay, thank you for speaking. So I just want to speak to what we know from this level regarding bathrooms. Bathrooms, for whatever reason, have become the bane of existence across schools, not just in Collingswood but across the state. In our last superintendent roundtable, we had ongoing discussions about problematic behaviors that we have been experiencing in bathrooms, for whatever reason. The Department of Health was here last week based on a formal complaint as it related to bathrooms being locked. They walked through the building that was unfounded, that was not true. And so that does not mean that there are some bathrooms on campus that access has been removed. For one, if a bathroom is out of order, then yes, it is locked. If a bathroom is in an area where it is unsupervised, because we have had a considerable challenge as it relates with vaping and other questionable behaviors, those are all conversations that have been held ad nauseam, both at the middle school and at the high school. And I know that this is an ongoing process that they're working through. The goal is to make sure that every student has access to the facilities that they need. We're not here to be the potty police. But what we have experienced is massive amounts of vandalism and damage in certain bathrooms. We have seen students congregating in large amounts in other bathrooms. And so we have increased the level of adult supervision in and out of those spaces and strongly encouraging students to take care of their business and go back to class. And so I know that the staff at the secondary campus, they're committed to making sure that students have a safe, clean space to be able to take care of their personal needs. But we are also dealing with some behaviors... But we are also, uh, dealing with, um, some behaviors that we have not seen in the past. Uh, and so it is, it will be a continued work in progress. I would encourage, if your child, um, is having a core issue, uh, please reach out to your child's school so they can be addressed quickly.
And then I'll also mention, uh, I can address a few, uh, issues here, the, the internet outages that the board and the district are well aware of. Um, I think this strikes back to the reason why we're here. Uh, you know, my understanding is that, especially at the middle school and high school, there is a, a issue in which we have to purchase a, a new networking switch in order to, to solve some of those internet outages, and, and as some-
Yeah, we, um, tech team has been troubleshooting it for some reason at this campus. We just have, every day, they're running over to deal with the switch. Um, and besides the switch itself, and again, I'm going to look at, look at Melissa in the corner, she's my techie, see if I get this right, because I'm not a technician. But when we call, we're trying to troubleshoot, and you've got to love these companies, if you don't have a maintenance plan on the switch, then they will not troubleshoot with you. So the tech team has been trying to troubleshoot, so we just pulled the trigger the other day, and I'm like, just get me the price for the maintenance contract, this is kind of getting ridiculous. So we are working on it, we're aware of it. I, I don't know what it is with some of, some of these buildings, but yeah, our switches have been, um, we've been seeing some issues with some switches, so we will have to get them fixed.
And, you know, having, have, you know, being someone who works in IT myself, you know, I understand how, how expensive some of these service-level agreements are and some of this hardware is. Uh, and, and I, you know, I've talked to Ms. Coleman, and, and she's explained to me how she has siphoned off money from here, from there, from everywhere to try to find the money in order to purchase such a switch to fix such an issue, right? And this is, again, striking back to the problem that we have here, which is, we are trying to make our budget go as far as possible to meet the needs of, of our students. Uh, in terms of Good Shepherd, again, let me reiterate, our space constraints have not changed. We are still out of space in so many different, uh, places within our, our district, right? And, and this is where I, I caution the public in, in going and saying, well, here's a singular item that, that we can go and, and cut, and can't you save money? Uh, you know, last year, we spent $11,736 to buy toilet paper. We could also not buy toilet paper, but that just causes a bigger issue of its own, right? So there are reasons why each of these line items are within the budget, and they are to address the needs of our, our students.
We're still in public comment, right? Okay.
Yes, we are.
All right. Adrian Earl, 409 Comley. Um, sorry if I, I didn't really prepare, um, but after hearing this meeting and your discussions as a board and your presentation of the, um, proposal, resolution, um, and then hearing from, um, the public comment from Mayor Maile and, um, responses from US Board, that is actually my, my ask is really mainly to you, President Chu, um, that since Mayor Maile is here right now and you are here, that, um, I would just ask, um, as, as a community member, that, um, prior to you guys leaving tonight, if you could, like, exchange information to be able to speak directly to each other and, like, sit down, you know, because although this is great because it's a public, um, we were inviting the public and some people came out tonight to hear this, and people can stream, and you're, you're giving a sense of transparency, it would also feel really good as a community member and maybe, like, less performative and passive-aggressive between the town and the board if you could say, like, we sat down, we had coffee, here we talked through this, we exchanged where I'm coming from, where the town's coming from, um, to really come together, like, as humans and community members, rather than only being able to say, although I know a lot goes into it, like, we sent a letter and then they sent a letter back, and we haven't actually sat down and met with each other yet. So, that's my request.
Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, uh, we'll now move to Section 8, adjournment, uh, motion to adjourn the meeting. And a second? There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Jim.